Happy New Year, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the January 9th, 2018 Meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Kate Borninski and I hope everyone had a great winter break and happy holidays. At this time, I would like my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Can we share?
Hi, I'm Patricia Mullin. Happy New Year, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Happy New Year. I'm Anupam Chugsetu.
Good evening, Patrick Keo. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. I'm Kim Crouch. I'd like to thank everyone in the audience who's here and those joining us at home.
Happy New Year. I'm Patty McCoyn.
Hi, everybody. I'm Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out tonight and Happy New Year.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for coming. Welcome to 2018. How about that? I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Elizabeth Adams, as well as giving a shout out to Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes who makes sure that he tapes these meetings so everyone can enjoy those that are not able to be present this evening. Pam, I'd like for you to continue on with the introductions.
Good evening, PM ESD Interim Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Good evening, Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hi, I'm Mike Bender, the Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Nick Brandon, Director of Communications.
Good evening, Heather Colombo, President of the Education Association.
And now it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a special guest tonight, Max Farnsworth. Would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Max. The first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I'm looking for a motion on Action Item 1801-110.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda approval of the Consent Agenda, Action Item 1801-110.
Support. Okay, it was moved by Member Brooks and supported by Member Mullin. Do we have any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Merritt, would you like to take us through the Consent Agenda?
Yes, this evening, the Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have three new hires. Believe it or not, we are still hiring champions in January, so it's a great opportunity to welcome them to the PCCS family. We have resignations, leaves, and retirements, as well as the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on December 12th, 2017. And finally, we have the first reading of Policy 9140.01, Facilities Utilization and Boundary Study.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm calling for a vote. All in favor, please say yes or aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome three new teachers to our school district, so please come up at this time. We are very fortunate to have the following new teachers in our district. First, I would like to introduce Andrea Crawford. Andrea Crawford would be a math intervention teacher at Halsing and Miller Schools. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Oakland University. Welcome, Andrea. Next, I would like to interview, introduce Christopher Schmoniak. He is going to be a math intervention teacher at Erickson and Farron Schools. He also completed his student teaching at Farron Elementary School. Comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University. Welcome, Christopher. And now we have Nicole Vance. She will be a resource room teacher at Workman Elementary School. She also completed a long-term substitute teaching position assignment in our district, and she comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Michigan State University. So, welcome. We look forward to all the great work you're going to do with our students. And if you want to come around at this time, we'd love to shake your hands and welcome you. Andrea, that way.
It's all good.
Congratulations, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Congratulations, welcome. Congratulations, welcome. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. Congratulations. You're welcome. We're glad to have you. Congratulations. Andrea, congratulations. I got some tricks up my sleeve. Yeah. I've been waiting for that candy bar.
After the New Year. At this time, we're at Letter B of our agenda, which is celebrating success, and I'm the presenter tonight. with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mylar Award for 20 years and 173 wins on the Canton sidelines. Tim's teams made the playoffs 17 times, won 11 division titles, eight league titles, nine district championships, and three regional crowns. In 2005, the Chiefs made it to the Ford Field for the Division One State Finals against Rockford. His final coaching record at Canton, which began in 1998, was 173 wins and only 52 losses. Tim's final game was November 10th, when Canton dropped a 27-26 decision to Novi Detroit Catholic Central in the Division One Regional Championship Game. Tim is enshrined in two Halls of Fame, the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association and the Michigan High School Coaches Association. At this time, I would like to invite Hale Hurd, Canton High School Principal, and Tim Beckler to, up to the podium. So, Hale, would you like to say a few words first?
Sure. Thank you. I'd like to take an excerpt from the late Bo Schembecker story, the team speech, which I believe perfectly encapsulates Coach Beckler's tenure as a leader of the Canton football program. No man is more important than the team. No coach is more important than the team. The team, the team, the team. And if we think this way, all of us, everything you do, you can take, you can take into consideration what effect this does have on my team. I've had the opportunity to view the Canton football program as an alumnus of Canton High School, and over the past four years as the principal. The Becklers, yes, Tim and Julie, who was a sideline staple, are synonymous with the Canton football program. During the past 20 years, the program has gained notoriety statewide and a few other places for being simply tough and emulating the team approach, as stated in Bo Schembecker's speech. They have brought great pride to the school and to the community over the past 20 years, especially the last four years, where an ultra-competitive principal liked to express his, express to the opposing teams that they were going to lose way before they were supposed to play Canton football. On behalf of Canton High School, we thank you and your family for your dedication, perseverance, sacrifice, for building a strong legacy for the Canton football program. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present Tim Beckler with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mylar Award. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, I was told by Shelley that I need to be prepared to say a few words. No computer, old school. I'm ready. It'll be quick, though. Thank you very much for this award. I'm not sure who nominated me. Was it you, Hale? He just won't admit it. But he owes me. When he first got the job, how many years, four years ago, five of those ice skaters won the gold medal, they came to the school and they did a thing. He comes down and asks me to be one of the ice dancers. I'm like, you're kidding me. I can't dance unless AC/DC's playing, maybe. And he goes, you'll get a nice red sweatsuit. I've never worn that red sweatsuit. But I did it. So, he probably owes me for that. Thank my family. My wife is incredible. She's here. My son Brock, my son Lou, my mother-in-law Hammer, sister-in-law Amy, and little sniveler nephew Jack, she had to take him out. Anyway, being an extra mylar is very easy when you love what you do. I loved being the head coach here at Canton for 20 years. I set very high standards and expectations for everybody in my program, and I'm just super proud of all the success we had. When our kids leave our program, they know what it takes to win and what it takes to be successful. And I always say before every game, be the magic. And they know the magic means hard work, toughness, grit, sacrifice, teamwork, and to be absolutely ferocious competitors. And these attributes can crush talent, and we've proven that year after year. I still get letters from ex-players, year after year, thanking me for the experience they had. It's helped them through college issues, military jobs, family problems. So, us, football is a game, but it's, it's, it's more than just a game. And I've loved being the football coach here for 20 years. And it's been a great tool to teach these valuable life lessons, and thank you so much for giving me that opportunity.
Could we have Tim's wife Julie and sons Brock and Lou come up to the podium? They deserve recognition as well. You could have the whole family come up. And I would like everyone to go around and shake the board members and administrators' hands.
Thanks for sharing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Always away from home. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, Tim.
You should have. I'm gonna just keep them in my car.
Unless they did it at the bank.
We're gonna do a quick picture.
That's probably true. He probably didn't tell them. Well, we move. Okay.
So, the next item on the agenda is Board Committee Reports and Actions. So, the first one is the President Report. We'll delay that until she's back. The next is, okay, well.
Perfect timing.
Voila. Okay, so next we'll have the President's Report. Thank you. I don't have a lot to report since we just came back from break, but in recognition of School Board Member Month, I just wanted to thank my fellow school board members for serving and recognize that this is a job that doesn't get a lot of positive recognition and wanted to thank those of you who have made sacrifices in order to be here. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Spa Committee with Member Chugsetu.
Well, we have not met since our last meeting, but we do have a meeting planned for tomorrow at 4:30, so I welcome everyone out there that's watching, that's listening. We have a great agenda planned. We're gonna talk about literacy, and we're gonna talk about some of the upcoming programs that are being discussed, so great opportunity for all of you to be part of that conversation.
And next is Policy Committee, Ms. Crouch.
So, we have not met since the start of the new year, but we are looking forward to continuing on our legacy of greatness with our committee and entertaining some really good things this year, as we did with last year. Our next policy meeting is going to be January 23rd here, starting at 5:30 in this building, and we will continue our discussion on equity. As we talked about last time, one of the things that we're embarking on this school year is looking at our equity policy and seeing how the various departments that, in the district, are implementing that equity policy and how we're living up to that. And so, we will continue our discussion with the athletic department. The discussions have been really great. Our last meeting was quite incredible. We learned a lot about athletics and some of the things that we're doing. And so, we hope to continue that discussion, but would definitely love to have anyone join us that's interested in it. Again, our next meeting is gonna be January 23rd at 5:30 here in this building.
That sounds really exciting.
It sounds wonderfully exciting.
I'm kind of disappointed that I'm not on the Policy Committee. I might just have to come in as an observer.
You should, you should.
But we did have a Finance and Operations meeting as an early holiday present for us on the 21st of December, and we got to go over the, the presentations that we're gonna see this evening on the custodial and the transportation, as well as hear about some great work that we're doing and using the bond funds that the community has allocated to us to improve some of our schools. We have another F and O meeting coming up next Thursday. That's Thursday, the 18th at 4:00 p.m. here in this, in this room, and we really encourage everybody here in the audience, as well as those watching at home, come join us. It is the best subcommittee meetings, and I really think you would get, have a great fun, and we would welcome your, your participation in those sessions.
Thank you. And next is the Educational Excellence Foundation Report, and that's me. I don't have a lot to report, but I did want to remind teachers and staff that the winter classroom grant applications are due this Friday, January 12th. So, please, please apply. At this time, we are at D on our agenda, which is Citizens Comments. Do we have any citizens comments tonight? Nope. Then we will go on to E, Administrative Reports and Recommendations. First up is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Borninski. And as you shared earlier, January is School Board Recognition Month, and this really is a time to salute the work of our volunteer school board members, as well as really just celebrate education in general. The special recognition of school board members reflects our combined commitment to leadership and accountability, assuring that all PCS, PCCS students excel. Our Board of Education ensures that decisions on school programming are made by people we've elected to represent our community's values, culture, and circumstances. They bear the responsibility of an annual budget of over $160 million, over 17,500 unaudit, 58 students, almost 3,000 staff members, 25 buildings, just an enormous task. They work to develop policies and make tough decisions that help to shape the future of our district. They are citizens whose decisions affect our children and build our school community each and every day. Members of the PCCS Board of Education, on behalf of my core team and our entire staff, we thank you for your dedicating countless personal hours to ensure the educational needs of all students are met in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. We applaud you for your vision and for your voice to prepare today's students to be tomorrow's leaders. Please accept a small token of our appreciation for all that you do to ensure that our students have everything that they need to learn, prepare, and thrive. So, on behalf of our Human Resources Department, you give these out every two weeks, these are dedicated to you, saying thank you. On the back, we say thank you for all you do for the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Your extra efforts are helping to provide our students with the educational opportunities to achieve their personal academic best.
I've always looked at those longingly when we hired new people. I'm super excited.
I'll pass these out, as well as, so we're doing, I heard somebody said you have enough candy over the break, so we got a little candy and a little healthy fruit. Thank you. Wow. Have to frame that. I've been wanting one of those. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Nothing I can't handle. Oh, and these are chocolate dipped. Thank you so much. Wow. Thank you so much. That's great. One thing that we say as our core team, when we visit schools, we work to just have fun, because it's important. We have a lot of challenging work, and you have to have fun together. We enjoy what we do. And I would say that this group of seven, now as our team of eight, we've come together, and we also practice that, having fun, as everyone can see with this competition among our subcommittees, but it really just makes that healthy competition. It makes the work just that much more enjoyable, because it is, it's a lot of work for the betterment of our students. So, we thank you for all that you do.
Well, thank you so much. I'm really, like, kind of taken aback by all this outpouring, so thank you, and we really appreciate being recognized. And, wow, like, I got three things here, and, and this. It's like, wow.
Wow. You set the bar high. We had to step up.
Okay, well, now I feel like it's kind of a downer. We have to go back to business.
This is not a downer. That's right.
It is great stuff, 'cause I actually am really looking forward to.
We're gonna get to the transportation.
But before then, we're gonna get to my favorite topic. That's not really what I'm looking forward to the most. I'm actually looking forward to the Teaching and Learning Presentation. Dr. Bender.
Thank you, Mrs. Borninski, and good evening, members of the Board of Education. As a district, we have established the expectation that all students will be safe while in our care, and that student behaviors will not interfere with learning. We have policies and procedures in place to establish and maintain a positive learning environment. We regularly monitor student behavior trends, and this evening, we will share an overview of our previous work, suspension expulsion data, along with our current practices and future work. And here to take us through this presentation is our Director of School and Family Support, Kayla Lester.
Good evening. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome back, 2018. So, I'll go ahead and get started. As Dr. Bender indicated, I'm gonna go over some of our expulsion data, but the outcomes of you have the presentation in front of you. We're gonna review the status from last year, review the plan that I shared with you last year and where we are with that. We'll review the expulsion and suspension data and share what we plan to do for 2017, 2018. So, some of the things that are guiding our work, we want to create a healthy and positive learning environment, and as part of restorative practices, which I'll be talking about a little bit, is based on prevention. And we want to develop clear and appropriate and consistent expectations and consequences that address student behaviors that adversely impact the learning environment, and as always, we want to ensure equity and continuous improvement as well as fairness. So, I want to review the steps for you that I shared with you. You remember at the end of 2015, 2016, and these were the things that we were going to do for 2016, 2017. So, we were going to maintain our current long-term suspension and expulsion process, and I can let you know that we have done that. Provide additional training on restorative practices for 2016, 2017, which included family engagement. And all of the administrators did receive a two-day training in June on family engagement. So, our administrators have received four days of training, the first two intro to restorative practices circles, and now the family engagement portion. We will, we continue to review our policy and guidelines and make any necessary revisions, which we have done. We have a committee that gets together once a year, and we go through and we make sure that everything is revised and is in line and is part of our student code of conduct. You will see that highlighted is developing a comprehensive K-12 Alternatives to Suspensions for Elementary, Middle, and High School. We have not done that, so that's why that is highlighted. That is definitely in the plan for this school year. And as always, continuing our PD for culturally proficient instruction. In addition to the goals that were set, because the state enacted Public Act 360 through 366, which indicated that restorative practices had to be part of any suspension decisions, if you remember, all board members were trained on the new law, as well as all administrators were trained. And in addition to that, we now have common documents for all of our suspensions and expulsions for all of our buildings K-12. In line with this process is our multi-tier systems of support. You may see this academically, but it is also for our, excuse me, I'm sorry, for our behavior as well. And so, tier one is that level with the expectations for all students in the building. Tier two would be more targeted assistance, students that may need counseling, one-on-one counseling, and tier three, if there is some crisis intervention or some outside counseling. So, it's all in line with that. So, we'll start to take a look at the data and look at our three-year trend, and you will see from the year 2014, 15, we had 108 total suspensions. And as you can see, our elementary suspensions have risen, and last year, we had a total of 264 suspensions total for elementary. You look at our middle school, you will see that we had a high of 381. Last year, we had a dip, and last, I'm sorry, 2015, 2016, we had a dip, and an increase for the year 2016, 2017. You look at the high school, though, you will see that we had a high in 2014, 15, and each year consecutively, it continues to go down, and this includes Starkweather as well as the Park, these numbers, for a total of 355 total suspensions for 1617. So, when we look at overall trend for three years, for Elementary, Middle, and High School, you can see that, again, when it's done collectively, that our Elementary last year, they went up, slight increase in Middle School, but our High School numbers are overall are down. In addition to this, as part of our new process that we've enacted, you will see the number of actual suspensions that, expulsions that came to the board office, and you'll see last year, the eight of those were heard by the board panel, by the board members, excuse me, and five were actually heard by the panel. And with the panel, the panel is a team of administrators, and they have the ability to uphold the recommendation, they can modify it, or they can send the student back. And as you can see, there are a total of five of those that came through to the panel, which is less than the year before, which was six. which is less than the year before, which was six. So we're in our third full year, we're going into our fourth full year of this, and as you can see, it's, it's working pretty well. So again, the advantages of having an educational panel, we get education perspectives on discipline and we are able to continue educational services. This year, we had, sorry, 1617 one student for a total of $1,500, about $1,500 we spent on outside services through McColl's. So as part of the new law, which includes restorative practices, there are seven factors that have to be considered, that we must consider when we are, when administrators are thinking about suspending students. And so that's the age, the discipline history, whether that student has a disability, is this something that's a manifestation of that child's disability, the seriousness of the offense, whether the violation or behavior threatened the safety of any pupil or staff member, whether the, whether restorative practices will be used to address it, and whether a lesser intervention would be appropriate for discipline. And so the law reads that school districts must consider restorative practices as an alternative or in addition to suspension or expulsions under this act. This is our first year in 1718, under this new law. And so with all of our administrators being trained, and we've also had of our new administrators, we've had a training for them as well this year, so all of our administrators are trained. And it's something that they really have to consider when, when they're thinking about suspending a child or even disciplining. And it really should be used in a proactive measure, not necessarily after something's happened. It's those things that we should be doing ahead of time. So restorative practices are based on principles that emphasize the importance of positive relationships because it's really all about relationships. And so research shows that what it does, it reduces crime, violence, and bullying, improves behavior, strengthens civil society, provides effective leadership, restores relationships, and most importantly, we want to repair that harm. And so this process is done because it involves restoring relationships when a harm has occurred. So when we looked at the data for, from September to December to see how we were doing with the use of restorative practices, because now everyone has been trained and what our data is looking like. So if you look at in the year, so 15 is 14, 15, 15, 16, and the gray is currently, and this data was pulled for, so it would go till December 15th of each year. And you can see that there's a slight increase in the elementary. Currently, we are 86 suspensions for all of our elementary schools. In the middle school, there is, they're down from where they were last year this time. And as you can see, the park is up as, as well as Starkweather, with those numbers combined, just a little bit, but still below the 300 level, like 355 total suspensions on average that they had at the end of this past school year. So we'll be digging into that data and looking as to what, what basically is occurring to cause that increase. I'll talk to you about that and, as I talk about some of the next steps for this year. So as I mentioned, we've trained all of the other administrators, but we've also trained our elementary and middle school counselors, our behavior support specialists, our school social workers, psychologists, deans, and anyone that had not in that group had the restorative practices, restorative circles, and they will also be receiving the family engagement training as well. We're going to develop a committee to ensure implementation of restorative practices and as part of that this year, it will be to develop alternatives to suspensions for our administrators. And in addition to that, we want to continue to work on our culturally proficient instruction, which will be a overview, we'll be working with Mike Peterson and the athletic department at the park. We want to train our athletic coaches, our engineers, and our bus drivers. And as we've gone through this work, we've realized that they are key individuals that we missed and that they need that training as well. Are there any questions?
I think there are.
Okay.
Board Member McCoyn?
Um, I was, like with this data.
Yes.
Where you're showing, like for 2016, 17, 264 suspensions for elementary school.
Yes.
Which is like two and a half times what it was in 2014, 15. I guess, I'm just wondering, do you know why that's happening?
Well, that, that was the other thing when I said I was going to mention, I knew you, someone was going to ask that question. So when we pull this data, one of the things that I've done is I've reached out specifically, I'm going to be reaching out to all of the elementary and middle schools, I'm sorry, all of the elementary schools, but I've already reached out to all of the middle schools as well as the elementary schools that are part of the PBIS program because they are required to keep data as part of the grant. And so I will be going to each of their meetings and helping them going, and to help them look over their data to kind of find out where these, what, what these incidents are because we just have the numbers and, and where, where they're happening in schools and what's going on and what support they need. After I've done that with their data, I'm going to go to the other elementary buildings to talk to them as well because restorative practices is proactive. So how are we using it in a proactive manner? What are we doing to do that? So that, that is one of the plans, to meet with each of the buildings. I've already scheduled most of them to meet with them.
I think in addition, something that we brought up last year, if you recall, when we had our discipline review, the elementary buildings have not consistently, over the past, utilized.
Meister.
Meister to report their incident. So this has been some training and some work that we've done with our administrators to set the expectation that every, even a conference with a student just needs to be recorded in Meister. So the numbers, I would say in the flat, in the past, were not consistently reflective of what was taking place within the buildings, but we really have, I think at the high school level, they really have been consistent on reporting data, but we're really working with our elementary schools now and you will see that in the 1617 year, more use of the system.
So I just, I want to follow up on that because originally, that's what I thought. I knew that we had an issue in 2014, 2015 where we weren't getting all the data. But my concern is about the elementary data for 2017, right? Because the law came into effect in August and there's supposed to be, you know, this, this presumption that we're supposed to, you know, be moving towards a restorative practice. So that seems like a huge increase still from last year. And so when you go to the, the buildings and you work with them or you talk to them, I think it would be interesting to see not only why, but if we're documenting. Because sometimes I think when people have to write down those things and look at whether or not someone should or shouldn't be, you, I, I'm just wondering if it, it's, it's being done because the, the, the numbers for elementary seem to be.
High.
Pretty, pretty high. Now, the high school, you know, I'm not as concerned about because it's low, but also because they have been really consistent in doing it. And that's where we've put in a lot of work. And the reason I'm asking is, I'm wondering if we need to put in a little bit more work at the elementary, particularly because September and December, through December, I'm not in the classroom, but I expect that kids come, you know, from the summer wound up and so some of this stuff, you know?
They're always eager to learn.
Right?
But that's, yeah, that's why we're going to do that data dig with, with, I'll be doing the data dig with those PBIS teams.
Yeah.
To find out what exactly is going on and where, where are those hot areas?
Yeah.
And when it, when are these things happening? Are they, is it happening at lunchtime? Are they happening at, you know, at dismissal? Where are these things happening? And so that we can come up with some strategies to, and be proactive in how we can handle that. And then, because they are required to keep that data, and then after that, I will be going to the other buildings.
Okay. And so what I'm going to ask Ms. Merritt, if it's okay, is to have her come back on that because this is, you know, this is something that's really, really important to us. And so I want to make sure that we're, we're digging into that.
And just to follow up on what Kim was asking is, I think it would be important to note, and, and I'm sure you're going to do this, but I just want to get it in our minutes, that we would probably like to see if there's any patterns occurring that where there's certain areas that, it's certain things that kids are doing that might be troublesome, you know, certain patterns in behavior.
Yes.
I, I didn't forget, I just, mine sort of was relevant to, to Kim's, so, okay.
Okay. So I'm, I'm following up on the same, the same basic themes. On the September to December suspension data, you said that the 15 was 14, 15, and the 16 was 15, 16, but that the 17 was 2018?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I misspoke, yes, thank you.
Okay, so these are actually for this school year.
Correct.
And then the previous two schools.
Yes.
Yes. That's why I was concerned.
Agreed. And so my, my anxiety on this is, is that these numbers continue to go up and they go up significantly at the elementary level. And that, you know, for a, a group that's been trained on these processes and these procedures, we had the same conversation a year ago about the problems with the data. And we were assured at that time that the data was going to be cleaned up. So my concern is, is that we're still seeing significant increases in suspensions at the elementary level. And I, I love the trend that we're seeing at the high school level. I think that in, in my personal experience at the elementary, restorative practices has been great. Incidents and concerns that had happened with, with my students or people that I know has really resulted in, in the, in the right kinds of behavior. But seeing these numbers this high at the elementary level causes me great anxiety. And, and so my concern with this is, is that, I, I recognize that we did not do the comprehensive alternatives to suspension. What have we done to accelerate the training on that process so that we can make a meaningful difference in this school year for that process?
What I'm going, there will be a team that is meeting this year to put that together, the alternatives to suspension, because it's really more, I mean, there are various things that we have skilled administrators that they're already doing, but it's really about putting a list together and having people come together to talk about what are some acceptable alternatives for students because it's, restorative practices isn't about students not being disciplined or being held accountable.
Right.
For what they're doing, but finding other ways and other alternatives for, that are acceptable and that administrators feel comfortable utilizing and getting groups of people together to do that. So that is something that will be done this year.
How can we light a fire under that process?
I'm working as fast as I can.
No, this is critical.
This is critical. And we're doing all the great work as a community in this process and to see these numbers be this high and continue to be this high in the December or September to December data causes me great anxiety.
So I do want to jump in and say, although definitely sense of urgency, I want to try to minimize the anxiety somewhat, and there are also some other factors that are to play. If you remember last year, just through our K-12 survey, what you heard is we had increased just behavior challenges that kids were dealing with. And as a part of our budget process, we actually got student support coordinators, behavior specialists in each of the buildings. If you recall, our principals working as hard as they can implementing restorative practices, at times still just weren't able to, to handle all of the work. And so we're asking for the reporting and trying to get to things, but now they have another level of support for our students that are working with the students. And to Kay's point, with restorative practices, they're not always going to be in place of a suspension, but what you're seeing there is the training, the, the reduction of harm, and the repeat offender. So when you're hearing what's taking place now, when you have your single suspensions, but the expectation is high, the accountability is high, the restorative work is being done, and so really, students are learning from and growing from. And so I do believe that as we're looking to some of the supports that we've put in place and the expectations that we've put to say, make sure that we're documenting everything, you will see that rise, but we don't have the anxiety because we have the plan in place and the tools in place. And so when you think about, you know, situations of bullying or things that you've heard where you're seeing now that our culture is changing such that your experience, when you're saying you're feeling the restorative work, the culture is changing. So that, that, that's not the same level of anxiety to us that we're capturing, setting the expectation, and the expectation would be now the trend is going to, to begin to come down.
Towards that end, when can we get another checkpoint on this?
So as you were just asking.
I don't want to wait for a year. I don't want to wait for six months.
I would say it would be that if we look at the, towards the end of this school year, maybe May is, so we look at the first semester and then look at the second semester and see where we're going with that.
Is there any way we can do that sooner than that? I mean, we've got these people that we've, these hired into these positions, they're making a meaningful difference in the, the process. I'd like to see a report back on this sooner than May. You know, I, I.
Do you have an idea of when, what you're looking for?
End of March.
So I don't know if you'll see that much of a significant difference in.
No, but we would at least get feedback as to what are the situations and, and the causes that are going on here and how we believe that our alternatives to suspension program might affect that. We might not see an impact on the data, but we'll at least get the information on the processes and the procedures that we've put in place to try to make that reduction.
So if we can put that as.
Now, I would expect that by the end of the year, we would see an actual reduction in the date, in, in the numbers, but we would hear information from the administration as to what was the, what were the, what was the findings of the, of the root cause of these problems.
So if we can, if I can just request that we put that as a question and then give me an opportunity to talk with our team offline and come back and, and give you a projected date for an update.
Okay. Any other questions? Member Brooks?
Yeah, I was just noting on the September through December is that it looks like there's at least one suspension a day happening. With elementary, it's over a larger number of schools, though, but when you, you do the math right here, you have four months and it's like almost a suspension, 120 days.
Yeah, so he's in, it's like if you take out Saturdays and Sundays, it's about, right?
And then, yeah, and also depends on building, so everyone is.
Well, but that's, but that's, so to that point, that's why we, we, we want the data because one of the valuable work, pieces of work that I think we did two years ago when we had this report out, is we were able to see trends. So we, like at the high school, we were able to see that a big part of the suspensions were, were related to, no, it was related to people missing, no, people missing Saturday detention. Why are we suspending kids for that, right? That makes.
They don't want to tend to suspend them.
Right, right. That, that kind of defeats the purpose. So that's the type of thing that we really need to, to see. So, you know.
Right. So those patterns.
You know, we will give the time to, to, to do the work, but to Board Member Kehoe's point, you know, I think we, it's good, better to see it sooner rather than later, even if we have a touch point at the end of May on the data, but, but this is really the critical work because it touches on so much stuff, whether it's equity, ensuring, you know, all of our students are successful. We just want to kind of make sure that the culture's there. And I know we're doing lots of, lots of good things, but it, it really is kind of concerning that this is happening at the, the elementary school, when we've done things like put in behavioral specialists, there's a new law that talks about you have to think about doing those things. So, so that's, you know, so.
Kay, when do you think the committee will be in place?
I put out, we, there was a meeting in December that the administrators had and we were, I asked for individuals, and I have a few individuals who have agreed to be part of the committee, but I may volunteer some individuals very quickly to do that. And so my expectation is at the end of, by the end of this month.
Okay. And I was just thinking that another, another thing I would like to get information about, when you have it, is the alternatives to suspension. What kinds, you know, what kinds of things?
That's what I'd be looking for in March, is data, what the causes were, the alternatives to suspension so that we can make a meaningful difference this year. I don't expect that we're going to see a huge reduction in the numbers, but if we put the process in place this year, then we have a head start for next year to, to drive these numbers down. And we should see a, a reduction in the. And we should see a reduction in the, in the May and June numbers based upon the work that we're doing. Yeah.
Okay. Member Mullin?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'm really glad to see the extension of this program to the athletic department, the engineers, the bus drivers. And I'm not sure how to phrase my question. We talked about changing the culture. And so I wonder about extending, how do we change the culture outside of our academics? What supports do you have in place for those extracurriculars and other places? Are you thinking about to make this our culture across the board everywhere we go?
So the first, the first piece is the working with the athletic coaches. Our assistant principals of athletics have been trained in restorative practices. But our coaches, you know, we contract with them. And so the goal first is to get them trained in terms of culturally proficient instruction and understand our, what we stand for here in this district. Because many of them, you know, they just come in and they coach. And then there have been some issues that we realized that we, we, these are key people that we've missed. Once we have had that cultural training with them, bringing them in in terms of restorative practices as well. And so that we can see, so that everyone understands when they come to the district that this is how we do business. As well as reaching out to our parents. I know I go out to buildings and meet with parents, discipline issues, and just explaining and trying to share with them that this is the restorative practices. This is how we do business. It's a, it's a huge culture shift. And it's, it's taking time. It's part of our student code of conduct. But it's just constantly, constantly, you know, repeating that message, getting that out there. And as well as our, and I know that our administrators are doing it as well. So that's, that's part of it. That's part of how we plan to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Crouch?
So to that point, so we've, we've talked a bit about the elementary one. So I don't want to miss what is a positive, right, in your presentation, which is the high school numbers, right? What would be interesting as part of, you know, any report out is to see, have the, find out what the high schools are doing to get those numbers down. Because two years ago, that's where our concern was. And they've obviously have worked on some things, listened to some things. So it would be really kind of good to see what have they done to make a difference. Because sometimes, you know, the middle elementary and high schools are different. But sometimes they can benefit from shared learnings to the extent that they're applicable, right? That's the thing. But, so, so that is the positive certainly in this because it seems that the high schools for the last few years have really taken to heart some of this stuff, and they've really tried to make some progress.
Yeah, larger population with lower number of suspensions.
Yeah.
So it's impressive.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Kay, Dr. Runder? Now, we are at E, number three, finance and operations.
Well, I mean, they're all great parts, but I've just personally invested in this.
Okay. Pam, would you like to take it away?
Good evening. This evening, we're going to present both the custodial key performance indicators and the transportation key indicators. Mike Peterson will take the lead. Also, we have Jason from custodial, Rich Welch, who's our operations manager. And for transportation, we'll also have Kelly Smalling. Mike, do you want to go ahead?
Patrick, I hope you know how you set the stage for me every time. It was best ever, good, fun, everything. And then I've got to, I feel like I need to come up here and get an opening joke.
Wouldn't be bad.
There is no joke about these numbers and the improvement that we've made.
And we definitely need a taller podium here. I'm sitting in the back thinking about a work order from our carpenter.
Make sure you put it in school, dude.
There we go. So I just kind of really want to set the stage a little bit because we are talking tonight about the first quarter. We're talking about September, October, and November. I know that with the holiday schedule and all the other events you guys had on your agenda, we got a little far out there this time. And the next quarter will be right on the heels of this one. But just to kind of set the stage. And of course, we're talking about our, our key points, our indicators. And we're going to do some comparisons between the first quarter of 2016, second quarter, third quarter, and then this first quarter of 2017, 18. As we go through the slides, when we get to the individual areas and rooms, we're looking at variances that are 10% off of where we'd like to be for a total point number. And those are things that we want to focus on. And anything that's in the 20% range, those are things that we need to take care of immediately. We're going to talk about some of our highlights, some testing we did on some floor products. We want to touch on the fact that we did increase wages and what effects that has. And just to kind of take you through that. Jason and I were discussing, we, our pictures from Canton High School from this summer. The picture of before is when we started stripping the floors this summer. And then the picture in the middle is when we finished, and this is a new floor product. And then what we were discussing is we really should have used exactly the same camera angle for the last shot because by changing it, at the end of the first quarter, it really looked better than the picture represented. It was, the floor finish that we were using was holding up real well. So I'm going to let Jason talk about this. This is some of our retention, retention information and some of the effects of our increase in wage.
All right, thank you very much. So one of our key attention points that we have, and I'm sure all our competitors have as well as GTA is back there listening, is retention and the labor pool as it stands today. Dramatic shift in the past couple of years. Unemployment being hovering right around 4% plus or minus. Makes it extremely difficult for recruiting and retention. Compile that with social media, the advent of things like Indeed.com, to which now, if I have an employee, every single day, they're getting a job offer from somebody. So we've put steps into place to combat that on our end from increasing the timeliness and the turnaround of hire to onboard, a variety of different incentive programs. And then most importantly, the contribution from the district came to increase the wages. So what we've done is we've started to track pretty diligently who's coming and going and why they're coming and going. As you can see on here, historically, as I looked at past data, on average, about 41% of our staff, when they left, they left to go get what they considered a better job or more money. And so to kind of back up a little bit, give some historical data. Anytime we bid, when an RFP comes out and we bid on a job, one of the first things we do is some general market analysis to find out what do competitive groups, other folks that are competing for the same labor pool that we are, what do they pay, what incentives do they have? How do we know that we're going to be positioned right within the community? Over the past couple of years with minimum wage increases, a lot of shift in the overall economic status of the, of the country. What we've seen is a lot of people are drastically increasing wages, drastically changing some of their programs to compete for those, those same staff members. So we wanted to start to track, do, how much did the wage increase make an impact? So the chart that you see up here, what I did is I took some historical data, average per quarter of new hires, people who, the terminations and resignations would be people then who left, and then the various reasons that they reported as to why that was. And the biggest thing that we are feeling good about, there's really two things. The first thing is, is our applicant pool as a whole has increased, almost quadrupled. So we're, we get about four times more applicants now than we used to for the same positions. With that being said then, we also have, because one, one piece of it was we don't want to have openings that hold for a long time. We don't want to have open spots, be short-staffed, be short on FTEs. The other side of it is, once we get the FTEs in, especially if they're good ones, we want to be able to retain them and keep them and stabilize that workforce. So so far, the first quarter, we have the one quarter of data with the new wages. But we've already dropped, you know, what we saw is that that, it was about a 50% drop in our terminations and resignations. Most importantly to me, the reason why those folks came and went, there was a drastic shift for, from them leaving to get a better job, to which in this particular quarter, we really only had one that left to get a better job. In fact, she only worked with us for about three days. And she got a job in the process of being onboarded. She got offered a factory job making $3 an hour more. I didn't blame her for taking the job. But more specifically now, what we're finding is the reason, the most significant reason, the highest number of people that left were because we know we can replace those staff members because we have the applicant pool to do so. So there's more accountability to behavior results to make sure that there's accountability there. We don't have to worry about keeping staff members because they're better than nobody because we know we can, we can make change. So I expect a little bit of a lag as we continue to implement that, that accountability piece, ratchets up a little bit. And then I'll be excited to see how, hopefully then, that leads to a more stabilized workforce. So at the bottom there, just a couple of interesting notes from the data as I looked at it. So we had just over half of the buildings, so for, from this quarter, so from coming out of summer into where we sit now, have had no change in staff. Same staff that did the summer work are essentially still there. Or they may have had one change. We have a lot of people, particularly part-time staff, that when full-time opportunities open, they want to take advantage of that, so they transfer in, and then I would bring a new person in. So there are a few buildings that had one person that changed, and it's, and that was the reason why. Is that part-time person took a promotion into a full-time spot, and that led to a replacement part-time person. In an ideal system, what we would have is, if one of my managers, for whatever reason, resigned, after all of the different sequence of promotions and opportunities came into place, I'd hire a part-time vacuumer somewhere. That's the intent of our development system long-term. So we did have four buildings that were an anomaly. So we took a look at those that had excessively high turnover. So what we found, and we've worked with the operation teams on, is some of those are because of concerns with relationships or environment that weren't a good fit for those particular people. And then we had a few that we had to look at as a company that, from a workloading standpoint, from the way the job description was laid out, the feedback from the staff was, this is just too tough, it can't be done. So we've had to look at that, increase time, modify some job descriptions to make that better. So we're taking action on those as well.
Okay, from here, we get into our evaluations, and we put a footnote on the bottom here because these, these are done at the start of the day, and we want everybody to be clear about that. And I guess I would also throw out, being the first quarter, we're coming off a summer cleaning, and it's September. And so our numbers generally track higher that first month or so before the wear and tear starts to show on buildings. So we fully anticipate in the next quarter, with salt, snow, things like that, that we're going to see some of these areas drop. Not that we want to, but the realist in me tells me that's probably going to happen in comparison to coming right off a summer clean. So I'm really focusing here on the, the last two columns. And yes, Kate, the lights are clean, but not necessarily working any longer. The repair of the lights, depending on if they're a normal height or if they're 10 feet in the air, are different people's responsibilities anyway. So we've, we just modified that to lights clean. But you can see where we were in our variance. That's the percentage away from where we'd like to be in the fall last year to where we are this year. And so on the entranceways, we're tracking very favorably in just about every category where we are up or up slightly. And stop me if I go too fast on any of these. I did have a couple of them here in our restrooms that stood out to me personally. Our walls clean and free from spots, our vents clean, which continue to puzzle me a little bit. But that, that is a mix of the high dusting and the vents that are related to the heating and cooling systems. So that's something for me to work on. And then mirrors in the restrooms, we really lost a lot of ground on that. That's a, that's an easy fix and something just to get back to processing the proper chemicals. Jason, Jason was saying wipe them down after they kivak, when they're washing the walls with the power washer and vacuuming mop. They're splashing on the mirrors and forget to go back and get them. So then they end up with a little score in there. In our corridors and stairwells, again, the vents stood out to me. Again, we're, we're tracking favorably with our numbers from the previous year. Our offices, we made a significant improvement in our offices. If you look at the, the fall of 2016, where we were, interestingly enough, the offices are areas that are done in the elementaries anyway, buildings, by our own plant engineers. And those are tracking a lot better now. The one exception, again, vents, that's over 10%. Classrooms, we've also been doing some, although these, these, these surveys are not done based with a teacher. Typically, they're done with a GRBS person and a principal or a plant engineer. But the expectation on some of these areas in classrooms, like dusting, it's only done once a week, it's not done every single day. And so I think we're also seeing some more realistic numbers there.
I swear I didn't do anything.
Now that you start that, you want to jump in and explain?
No.
We did have, we did have two areas there again. And, and this is, this is area, these areas are both in, let me just back up one slide. In regards to the floors, and we did increase our spec on the floor cleaning. And so having the number of 9.7% and 6.9% there, I really want to work on that because that's something that we know from our staff is an issue for them, particularly the little kids that spend so much time sitting on the floor. We're investing there, and we're working on that process. And so I, although the numbers are nice improvements, I still would like to see those lower. And then this is just really our summary sheet as you compare, compare across. This is a compilation of all the schools combined and all the, all the sheets combined. Were there any questions on any of those before I jump on further?
Actually, I have a question. You said that the people who are doing the inspections are a GRBS employee and principal.
Or a plant engineer.
Or a plant engineer.
Those are done in a combination between our contractor staff and our staff.
Okay. Is it the same people every time?
Not necessarily. A lot of times in the buildings, it's who's available to go around with a person, you know, from GRBS.
Okay.
And Kate, just to provide some more context on this, because this came up last year. These are random ones. The, the schools do not know, and the GRBS employees do not know which school they're going to each day.
Okay.
So we don't, you know, we walk in, the principal may not be available.
Right. Okay. I was just curious.
The bar, the bar charts, yeah, no?
So just to compare, again, we're trying to compare like quarters. So this is the current situation with school dude. There's good news and bad news. The good news is, is that we see more buildings starting to utilize it, which is good. The sort of bad news side of it is that we still have, so Canton High School has always been historically the best users of school dude. And that's good. It unfortunately doesn't demonstrate or kind of accurately portray. Like, right now, as I stand there, I, I feel like especially this year with the things that we've done in Canton High School. Canton High School is one of the best-looking buildings we have. I mean, it's a marked transition, but yet still one of the highest in terms of school dude communication. That staff there is very well-versed on utilizing it, and they use it for everything, requests, things. We also have an uptick in, and I think that. We also have an uptick in, and I think this is a result of us promoting the program, of people are communicating more when there, when there are more simple things. So if my trash can gets missed, I'll get a work order that says, hey, my trash can got missed. Whereas before, that might have just been, hey, plant engineer, can you come get my trash? Because it got missed. So we're seeing more communication from more places. Meanwhile, though, what's happening and where's, if you look at the difference between this year and last year. Yeah. So if I'm, I'm looking at, the biggest categories still remain either a request that they want something done or if something didn't get done. Something got missed, something got overlooked, hey, this was supposed to happen and it didn't. The, the bad side of it is, is we are trending away from people utilizing it to give compliments and positive feedback. So those are drastically down. We still are getting that, but it's coming much more in person and in email. It's good, it's reflective of we're in the buildings and informing relationships, but it's not as trackable.
So what I'd point out is on the Canton High School is if you look at the missed tasks in 2016 versus the missed tasks in 2017, you know, they, it almost completely disappeared.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, there's some really positive data there. On the other hand, the bathrooms aren't, aren't great at Canton. We're seeing a lot more concerns there. Now, maybe those were categorized as missed tasks last year. And so it's the same problems, they're just having a more precise coding for it, but.
Could be, yeah. So we just want to encourage and continue to encourage the teaching staff utilize the school dude system. I do continue to see emails that will come in from staff members to the principal, for example, that says, you know, I'm having trouble logging in, can you just pass this along? So that still exists out there. We're willing to help in any way that we can, just to continue to get the data in the work order system. It is a service that we provide and it, it's, it helps us tremendously to track trends and, and look at data over time. So that is, that is very good. The other thing to point out too is that we've really made a significant focus too with some of our, the way our staffing is set up and so forth, to make an impact on any sort of security concerns. So particularly in the park, it's one of our most difficult places to keep secure because of the number of doors and the amount of traffic. But I was also encouraged to see the number of security-related work orders is, is going down as well.
I don't want to downplay this too much either, but I know somebody who mentioned earlier about the, we're a community of 3,000 staff members or something. And at Canton, our, our largest requested for a three-month period is, looks like about 25 work orders. And, you know, not where we want to be, we'd like to be zero. But it, but it's also, I don't want to skew anybody's impression. It's not 20 times 10 or something. That's, that's the actual number there on the side. And so most of our buildings are just down less than 10 even for the, for the whole quarter, so.
I can also say, sorry. A lot of times, like if you, in the November stats, for example, the second highest building is Halsing. And Halsing really spiked due to, I can actually track that to a specific instance where the plant engineer was off for some sort of leave, they're out for a week. We had a substitute there who clearly was not well-versed at what exactly they were supposed to accomplish every day. So we got a lot of work orders that at first I was pretty confused by because it would say something like, hey, the media center didn't get vacuumed. And I'm going, well, that's not, that's not our staff, that's the PE staff. But then it came, then it was brought to my attention, no, we are subbing there. I'm like, oh, well, somebody get with that guy. And so we had enough, within a few days at Halsing, we had a, I would say about half of those came from like this one three-day stretch. But it did point out a training issue that we resolved.
Our next, next slide here is, are the WOW awards that were submitted this quarter. As Jason mentioned, we're not getting a lot of necessarily compliments in the work order system, but people are still writing letters and sending emails and saying, hey, my person here in my building, I see them in the afternoon, boy, they are great, those kinds of things. And these are the bonuses that GRBS pays out. We've talked about those before. It's an incentive to the employees. You know, I, I'm getting a little ahead of myself too, but, you know, we've had some wonderful things about our drivers, this particularly during the holiday season that were just really heartwarming. And it's good to see our staff recognizing all the people that work in the district. So kind of as a wrap-up here in our cleaning results, we don't have any categories any longer that are in the 20% range. So that's, that's good improvement. We've still got two areas that we're working on that are in that 10 to 19%. We continue to focus on the classroom floors. We have some work to do in the vents. And, you know, our restrooms, our walls and our fixtures there. We were pretty excited this time that we didn't have any work orders that were specifically about staff behavior or, you know, I don't, I didn't like the way this person addressed me or the people are rude or, you know, can't find them. So we feel like we're tracking in the, in the right direction there. Rich is our person who's onsite during the second, third shift. I can't tell you what a difference that makes. I'm really glad that the board allowed us to add that, that position to the district. And a district this size, that's, that's really essential to have that extra set of legs and eyes in the district. You know, overall, I just feel like it's, it continues to be a real proactive and collaborative group to work with. So we, we recognize where we're still not as good as we'd like to be and we're going to keep working on it. Questions?
Member Brooks.
Do you have any like signage that you have up to remind faculty and administrators and the students that you have this service, this?
School dude?
School dude?
We don't have any signage up, but it certainly is something we could do or even the emails on a regular basis, hey, remember? We do talk at leaders meetings in different, different times when we have some of our administrators together, but not necessarily the general staff in general.
Yeah, because you said Canton was more into it than the other high schools or some of the other schools. Maybe they either don't know about it or, I'm sure they know about it, but, you know, if you keep pressing on it, sure, they'll probably use it a lot more.
Absolutely. Hopefully they'll offer compliments.
Member Kehoe.
So first of all, I want to commend the, the entire custodial and plant engineer staff. I like the improvements that we're seeing in this process. But I also want to recognize that we are doing these surveys at the beginning of the school day. And one of the things that we've, that we talked about in our FNO meeting is that there is sometimes feedback that comes back from the schools or from the teachers, et cetera, that by the end of the day, they're not necessarily as, as clean as they would like them to be. Did, I know that we recently did a survey, but we haven't completed the analysis of that. Do we have any highlights of that or areas that are focuses for us that could help us in our, in our custodial process?
I, I don't have any to present tonight that I rolled into this, but you are correct. After this went out, then we had our, our staff survey. And so certainly there's things that we can glean from that as well.
So that's work that you're going to incorporate into your plannings for the subsequent quarters and look at your workload and everything else to see how we can maintain an acceptable level of clean throughout the day?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question. Do you have, and I'm, I'm sure you do, but just refresh my memory. Do you have a process to help the employees remember to do their tasks? Because missed tasks is been, you know, even in the past, has been pretty high and it still is.
So this quarter also reflects the first rollout of a new system that we put into place. We presented it at the end of last year. And what that is, is a modification of how we've set up the job description. So every employee gets a sheet that says, here's everything you are supposed to do today. And it corresponds with a map of here are all the places you are supposed to do that. And, and they all have that and as, as well as they are posted in the custodial office spaces. The transition from that was that we went from having designated days where your classroom gets done on Monday and your classroom gets done on Tuesday and et cetera, to a more balanced, task-centric type of system where each day is a specific task. In the, it took some time for that to really gain traction. It's a, it's a change in mindset, it's a change in system. It took a little bit of time as well as the, the specifications for the full sweep and mop. There was, especially once we got into the beginning of October, when you could start to see that more prevalent, you could tell that there were some people still resisting buying into that, that process. So this quarter does have a little bit of skew to it due to the learning process of that. But towards the end, what we started to see is that I, I have not received a lot of consistent concern about today was supposed to be my day for my room to be cleaned, but it didn't get done. Now we are able to isolate it more to a specific, today was the day my room was supposed to be dusted and it didn't get done. And I can, we can zero into more specific of the task and, and know how to remedy that. So I, my expectation is anytime we have a missed task that gets reported, it's really just going to be a mistake. We want those truly to be, I'm sorry, it was a mistake versus a sign of a process that's off track.
Okay. Member Mullin?
Thank you. Just one comment. I want to commend you for the uptick stabilizing your workforce and retention. I think that's tremendous. I still remember Jerry, the custodian from my elementary school a million years ago in New York, was an integral part of the school. And, and I think that the work in that area impacts our students and our staff, that stability, that trust, the relationship that you talked about. So kudos on doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will have the transportation key performance indicators and Mike will lead that.
Again, a familiar format here. I'll just take you through it. These again are September through November. And again, we have comparisons from various quarters. And can show you some results there and some stats and how they relate from one quarter to the next and year to year. This is our current staffing status. We've had a little bit of change. And so we have two full-time and one part-time dispatchers. We have 118 drivers. We have five licensed to drive people that work in the office. Kelly being one of them who gets to drive a bus more than she'd like to. But that's part of that 102% or the 106% coverage that we have when people are out or people are sick. We have 27 monitors in the first quarter. Those are people that are on the buses by virtue of their IEPs, of the students who ride the bus if the monitor is required. We have five full-time mechanics. And Kelly just informed me recently that we're going to move, bump that up to six full-time mechanics beginning, the 28th of this month. We're bringing on another mechanic. Do you want to just explain the office staff and the little change you made there?
So we had some change, of course, with our company. One of the great features that we do offer is whenever promotions can be made, they are made. Recently, Carrie Drew, which was one of our operations manager, was promoted to our Ypsilanti School District. So she was promoted to the general manager there. So it's a great opportunity with our company and that. So we have gone through some changes. So recently, I'm still the general manager. We have promoted two of our other employees up, which Chris LaGro, who does help us with our data, is now one of our also, our operations managers. And Mike LaBurns, who is also our router, he is no longer doing the full-time routing. He is an operations manager as well. And then we do have another router, Greg, who is stepping into place of Mike, starting training. And Mike is still working with him. And then we also have, still have our safety supervisor, Jim, who is on board with us. And we still have our special ed router. And then we also have our two dispatchers and a part-time dispatcher and our payroll person. And then we also have put into place another person that is helping with customer service and videos. We do now the CCTVs that we do daily. Every day, we pull at least a minimum of three videos from buses. We do that with our company and we track that. And there is no if, ands, or whats, it is done daily. So that we watch footage on our buses. And then we will also still be promoting, hopefully by the end of 18, oh, by the 18, end of 18, we will have drive cams also in our cam, all of our buses. That is a little bit different than CCTV, so those will be installed as well. So more staff to help us out to maintain all these new things that we're doing. We also started a system that's called a bus report daily. Instead of just when a parent calls, we log on this with our company. We have a, if a parent calls about a complaint or a compliment, we implement the system into our bus report as well. So now there is no more of a parent calling and saying, I called, I reported, nobody's done anything about it. There is a tracking system now. And this does go to our corporate office and it is monitored daily. And also we are enforcing our speeding reports as well. Every day, we have a system that's called DOMO that we go into every day that we track into it. If anybody is going over the speed limit, it gives us a, a speed violation. It gets sent to us, we pull it up. It goes through a whole system to where we track it. We go on a map, it shows us exactly where they were speeding, what the speed is. We have, had some conflicts, what we have to report that still and track it. Whereas perfect example on Cherry Hill, the speed limit throughout the day changes due to the schools. Well, it tracks every, all day long that the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. But I have to go through every day and we go through that and we monitor that and make sure that where their location is, it pulls it right up on a Google map like you can see exactly and drops a pin and exactly where the bus was located where it pinned it. So we make an explanation if it was legit. If not, if it is legit, we do a coaching with those drivers and there is a communication log in the system so that we know if they have a violation of speeding or not.
I knew I would never get through all those changes, but. Sorry, let Kelly step in here. This is our staffing, our transportation. The top, the top graph is, is basically about drivers and routes and our route coverage there. The DIT column is our drivers in training. So we do have, at the time that this quarter was in process, we had four people in training. And the other question that we spoke about in our finance and operations while we were laughing and slapping back was the plus, was the plus one. We had a, a five mechanics and we had kind of an assistance mechanic who has now left. But as Kelly just mentioned, rather than that assistant mechanic spot, now we're bringing on another full-time mechanic. This is our transportation cost per mile operated. Our numbers are fairly stable there. The, the miles per quarter vary a little bit as the routes change year to year. Our cost is, fluctuates a little bit. If you can see where our first quarter was, a year ago, we were at $3.97 a mile. In the middle of the, or at the end of the year, we had pared that down a little bit. And, you know, that can vary just even cost of fuel. But then we're, we're doing better this first quarter of this year than we were the first quarter of the previous year. This is our cost per rider per day. Our ridership always, always changes. We do a fourth Friday count in the transportation world. It doesn't occur on a Friday any longer, but just like we do when we, we count student heads, we count ridership as well and report that back to the state. And you can see again where our cost per day is a little bit lower this year than it was in the first quarter last year. I do want to point this one out here. This is the cost per bus per day. And what makes the, the quarter at the beginning of this year appear to be higher is that we had several old buses that were in our fleet the previous two times that we reported to you. So you can see our fleet was, had mushroomed up to 154 at one point before we sold off those excess buses. And so when we were doing the division to give you the number, we had more buses in the fleet. It lowered our cost per day, at least visually. But those buses were basically sitting there waiting to be sold. So we weren't really investing anything in them, so. This was a question that maybe is a slide that could go away in future, future times. But we still have 100% of the district route buses, buses that we use on assigned routes. 100% of those have GPS. And as, as Kelly's reporting to you, there's a whole. 100% of those have GPS. And as, as Kelly's reporting to you, there's a whole lot more that's being tracked that's going on besides just the GPS system. We did not change, if you recall, we did not change the alternatively fueled buses this time. We, we bought gasoline buses. And the issue that we did, and I don't consider that to be an alternate fuel like propane is, but we had the issue of range, that we needed buses for field trips where we could refuel on longer trips. And the, the ability to refuel on propane isn't quite as widespread as you'd like to, you know, just say, hey, I'm going to send a bus to Jackson today and maybe there'll be someplace there to fill it up before we come home from the football game. So we haven't really changed that. This is our utilization of our buses in the graph. Six is the perfect number there because we have three tiers in the morning and three tiers in the afternoon. So if you were using a bus, every single bus on every single tier of every single day, that number would be six. The reason that the special education utilization is lower is those routes just by nature tend to be longer and more time consuming. We have locations outside our district and so we just can't utilize our special education fleet as fully as we can do our general education fleet. Our average ride time, this is not the, the shortest ride or the longest ride, but when we take all of our students from the time, the first student's picked up to the last student and we average them out by the number of riders, that's, that's the average time. Certainly we continue to try and balance that out for our students so that if they have a long ride in the morning, they have a short ride in the afternoon type of thing so that everybody gets treated fairly. And I guess if you're in the middle, you, you're in the middle both ways. We're back to some bar graphs here. The first page, or the first set of four, on the left-hand side of the dark black line there is where we left off at the end of last year after we had made all of the changes we could, done all of the things that we could, you know, with the constraints that we have in our district and the places that we have to go. That, that is a side-by-side comparison of where we left off next to the first quarter of this year. And it, it really didn't help us any that we had the construction season this summer that we had. It was pretty aggressive out there. And about every time Kelly and her crew would figure out an alternate route to get around one project, they'd close that road. And I think at, at one point they had about four major roads closed and there was nothing to do except sit in the one lane of traffic and wait for the lights to change. But our, our numbers didn't, didn't change significantly in any of the columns there. And then this is just a comparison of last year's first quarter to this year's first quarter. And again, I'd like to say that we made vast improvements, but really they're pretty stable year to year. You might find little upticks of 1% or 2%, one way or the other, a little better here, a little bit worse there, but, but pretty close to the same. We start out at the high school, looking pretty good. It's the beginning of the day. It's the beginning of the end of the day. And as we go through, we have little glitches along the way. We have middle school shuttles that have been problematic for us for our talented and gifted. And, you know, then the, the elementary people are at the end of the day. And so anything that happens in the first two tiers typically carries over to them. These are our accidents. We had one preventable accident this quarter. Total number of miles traveled, a little over a half a million. And so not, I've said this before, just doing, doing a math problem out of it. That's, you know, it doesn't always happen exactly this way, but, you know, you've got 250,000 miles without an accident. These are the two accidents we did have. We had a non-preventable. The first one up there at the top, basically our bus was driving down the road, making a legal left turn and somebody, I think texting, although I couldn't prove that, with his head down, turned, made a right turn around the corner, went way out, swung way out, just ran into the bus. And there wasn't, there was no place for the bus driver to run for that. The second one that we included as a preventable accident, that was a, an accident at an intersection. The light was changing. And while the bus driver wasn't ticketed, was he?
No, he was.
Oh, was he?
Yeah. He was actually.
Okay. But that was a, do I go, is he going to come through the light type of an accident? I think I have the right of way. They thought they had the right of the way. And obviously, no, we did get the ticket for that. I, I wasn't aware of that. So here's where we're trending over the years. If you look at last year, September, October, November, and you look at this year, September, October, November, we do have July and August thrown in there because we do run buses in the summer. I don't know that everybody's aware of that, but we do transport for our summer programs. So we have six last year during that time slot, six accidents total, and we had two this year. So congratulations for your safety talks and your monthly meetings. We, we made a little clarification here. But first of all, I guess I'd like to mention, this is a, a page we put in here for maintenance. This is, when we look at our preventative maintenance schedule, there is a, a computer-generated list of every bus in our fleet that comes up and is given to the garage. 90%, you say, well, that's not too good. But remember that 90% means maybe that bus was due for an oil change and it didn't happen on Monday, it happened on Tuesday. But it, it still counts as being late to us. So while it's not a serious thing, it's still something that we track. The work order number is really high at 627. We had the great fortune of starting out the school year with state inspections on the first day, first week of school, right? Second week of school. State inspector just tells you, here we go. And they start pulling buses off the road and we're barely getting our feet on the ground. And we're putting sub-buses out there because the inspector's got other buses in. So it was a, it was a challenge there in the beginning of the year. Our fiscal year-to-date, that was a whole year. The 16, 17, that was a whole year. The last line, the fiscal year for this year, that's just our year-to-date. It's not the entire year. So we're looking like we're spending a little more per month, but we had a lot of work that we were forced to do and things that we had to get done because of that inspection and being ready. So I, I feel like our, as we go through the rest of the fiscal year, those numbers were balanced and come more in line of where we were. And I mean, that's my, my total expectation because we are improving the age of our fleet every year as we buy new buses too. So I would expect that piece of it to go down. Any questions and answers there? I, I tend to go a little fast sometimes. I know you've seen this format a lot of times, but.
Member Sido.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to commend you on looking at the numbers that you have in place for the accidents. I know we're only midway through, but looking at the data from the beginning of the school year, July through December, that's really commendable and I applaud you for whatever you've done to keep those numbers down, training, you know, getting rid of the drivers that aren't safe. But that looks pretty impressive and keeping my fingers crossed in terms of, let's not jinx the numbers. Hopefully that trend will continue.
You know, our company, especially with our unfortunate situation in Chattanooga, that was our Durham company, the, all the things we're implementing, all the things that they're doing, just like I said, the driver was removed. And our, you know, we, we watched the video, you know, he thought the driver, he had a yellow, you know, it was, it was actually a green light. That's why he was ticketed afterwards. They got the light from the gas station and then we pulled the video from the bus. So it's one of those situations where we look at everything and, and to us, he's a great guy. We have him on as a monitor still. He made a mistake. It, it could be a costly mistake. So at that point, at our time, we won't have him drive a school bus for us again. And that's what we look at. And anytime anybody's, and any, even if it's a minor of, I bumped the curve and I hit something, every driver has to go through two hours of retraining. We have a safety meeting every single month. Our company, we, we don't wait, you know, safety is the number one thing.
Right.
You know, the kids' safety, so.
So thank you for that. Member Kehoe.
So first of all, I want to really appreciate the relentless focus on safety. You know, that is, is great. And just to, to redo that. I also wanted to, to talk about the culture that you guys have done. And we saw a lot on social media that bus drivers that had made quilts for their, for their riders and just, yeah, I mean, just really great, heartwarming stories about the riders and that they're really part of the community.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that and that the, the students and everybody, even though this is an outsourced service, we feel that, that the Durham people are all part of the community and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. And I'll let them know because that's one thing that they are their kids. You know, that's what they say every day. So.
And then with respect to the GPS slide, I don't think we need to do that one anymore, but I'd love to have that changed to be a dash cam slide. You're not getting rid of a slide?
Kelly, tell you next.
Now, I, you know, the highlight of my Christmas season was the email. And I don't know how many people saw it from West. And it was about the money that the drivers raised. And the whole email was our driver, our drivers, our drivers. The word Durham never was in the email from the assistant principal. We turned a corner.
So I, I just want to mention that I, I really think that the culture that you're promoting is, is wonderful. And I witnessed it myself because I had to call on the first or second day of school, I can't remember which, and Kelly answered the phone. So I thought that was pretty amazing that, you know, you were there in the office.
That's because it came in on the bat line.
No, no, I. I called the regular number.
Try to go to our office and she doesn't answer. If I'm not at dispatch, I'm on a bus. So.
Okay. Member Brooks?
Yeah, just one question. Is, is there any reason on your bus schedule, your routes or the time of day that a school bus would be parked for extended time in a parking lot someplace?
Yeah. So a lot of our routes, because they're using the bus on all three tiers, they finish up at the high school and let's say they, they're over in that general direction of our district. And then their middle school route doesn't start for 10 minutes or 15 minutes. So they'll, rather than drive back to the garage and just burn gas, the drivers will lay over in a, in a parking lot, which not everybody understands why they would do that, but.
Yeah.
It's more economical for us because they're on the clock. The driver themselves are on the clock anyway, but we don't need to put the miles on the bus. And so they'll just wait there and then at the prescribed time off, they go and they head out for their first.
Yeah, because I noticed that a couple of times driving early in the morning and that.
We try to refrain from going to companies and parking lots. We, if we can stay at the schools, like at the high school, if you were to pull in there in the morning, you'll probably see a, probably approximately, we have 74 high school buses. You might see 50 buses sitting there because of their layoffs. Of course, we drop at the high school, as everyone knows, early enough to get the students in there, be, go through the traffic. And then some buses will head out. And the reason they head out and then they'll park somewhere closer to where their locations are because they're further out for wanting to get through the traffic. And with all the accidents and everything else that we've had and the constructions that we've had, it's better to be closer to your first stop so you're not late for that first stop. Because then once we're late, we, like we said, it's that ricochet effect. If we're late for this one, then we're late for the next one. A perfect example of when they shut down the highway yesterday, back road, if anybody was in that mess, that happened. We literally had buses on roads for half an hour trying to get through all those detoured areas yesterday. So if they can leave at the school, go somewhere closer, so if there is another accident, they can avoid that area. It's a lot easier. But we want them to be somewhere where they're not out, like hidden or anything else. And we make sure that they're away from cars and everything else, so they're out of the area too.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And next on our agenda is action item 180111, consider approval of bid package 11, Smith Elementary School corridor locker replacement. This is a final reading. Do I have a motion on this?
Madam President, I move that we approve action item number 16.
18.
180111, 111. This is bid package number 11 for the Smith Elementary School corridor locker replacement, final reading.
Support.
Okay. It was moved by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Do we have any discussion on this? This is, this came to us back in December, I believe. So we should all be familiar with it. Okay. All right. Then I'm calling for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next item on our agenda is action item 1801112, consider approval of bid package 12, district-wide cafeteria table replacement, final reading. Again, this is something that came to us before. Do I have a motion on this?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of bid package number 12, district-wide cafeteria table replacement, final reading. This is action item 1801112.
Okay. It was moved by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Is there any discussion on this?
I'm just excited to see this done.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Action item 18, oh, next up is action item 1801113, consider approval of resolution for district telephone fleet refresh. This is also a final reading. Do I have a motion on this?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of resolution for district telephone fleet refresh. This is a final reading, action item number 1801113.
It was moved by member Kehoe once again and supported by member Brooks. Is there any discussion on this? I just want to say that I have heard that our staff members are very excited about this. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We are now at follow-up board questions. I don't believe we had any from our December 12th meeting. We still have one outstanding item, which is the summer school data, but that should be coming at the end of this month. Okay. For tonight, I have that, we'd like an update on the expulsion and suspension data after Kay has met with the schools. And the idea is to get a touch point at the end of March and then possibly in May. And also once the committee's in place, we want to get an idea about the alternatives for suspension. Liz, did you get that? Okay. Okay. Are there any other follow-up board questions that I missed? Okay. I would like to call for a motion to adjourn if, if anyone wants to do that.
Support.
It was moved by member Crouch and supported by member Sido. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0 and we are adjourned.
I know.
Did you just kind of pick that number? What, are you taking, taking that?